Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to the Mayor's Unity Prayer Breakfast. So excited to be here today. I tell you what, my heart is full. My heart is full because we come together as a community at this time to really celebrate the Lord together, to celebrate what He's doing in our lives. And I just want to encourage you today. God is in His people. And He is here in this place today. And it's just such a wonderful thing to see all of us with different backgrounds, different, you know, we're different, but we all come together as one in Jesus Christ. And so I am so grateful just to be a part of this. Mr. Mayor, thank you for inviting me to welcome us today. I want to share a passage of Scripture because my heart is full. And it says, "Shout joyfully to the Lord, all the earth! Serve the Lord with gladness; come before him with joyful singing. Know that the Lord Himself is God; it is He who has made us and not we ourselves. We are His people and the sheep of His pasture. Enter him to his gates with thanksgiving, and his courts with praise. Give thanks to him; bless his name, for the Lord is good, His loving kindness, His everlasting, and His faithfulness to all generations. God is good."
Amen.
Hey, I just want to encourage you, on Wednesday mornings for about three years, little over three years, we've been praying. We've been praying for revival in our city, in our community, been praying for our leaders. We meet, the mayor and myself, and a whole bunch of us meet either at Greater Mounts I Abbotist Church or Central Abbotist Church. We switch every week. Next week's at Central Abbotist Church, 9:00 a.m. Come to the sanctuary and pray with us. We have a whole group that's been praying with us for a long time. God is answering those prayers. And I'm thankful for each and every one of you who've been a part of it, and just want to encourage you, come, be a part if your schedule allows. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
In the Lord's name be praised. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you Pastor Caldwell for those words of inspiration. You have made my task very easy and very short. You are eating now. I just ask you to pause for a moment that we would bow in prayer. Our Father and our God into whose presence we have assembled on this Thursday morning to offer thanks and praise to you because you are God, and beside you there is none other. We've come this morning, God, out of a sense of community, and we thank you that we're able to assemble, to look upon each other's face, and to hear one another's laughter. We thank you, God, this morning, for a mayor and a first lady who has a heart for you, and it is translated in his service every day. We thank you, God, for every component of this community that seeks to work hand in hand in harmony, that the city may be all that you desire it to be. For every church, God, we thank you for the leadership on every level. We thank you, God. But as we thank you now, God, we also must come this morning to ask that you forgive us. We repent, God, individually, and we repent collectively for not being the kind of community that you desire us to be. We ask that you forgive us that we made excuses when you gave us opportunity. We ask that you would forgive us, God, that we have looked over one another when you called us to be one. Now, God, we pray that you would breathe afresh over us this day and in the days to come, that every prayer that has been prayed already, every, every opportunity to invoke your presence, God, that you will manifest yourself in us individually and in this community, have your way, that we might be a model community, that we might, God, build bridges and tear down walls that would keep us from becoming. Now, Lord, thank you for this gathering. Thank you for the food that we ask you to bless, for our bodies and our bodies for thee. We bless your name. We praise your name. We glorify your name. And at this moment, I exalt the name of Christ. It is in his name. Amen.
Greetings on behalf of the Lee Russell Ministerial Association. We are blessed to be a part of the beginning of this opportunity years ago, and grateful for the relationship and collaboration with the mayor in doing so. Lee Russell Ministerial Association reaches across the region with the diversity of Christian and church leadership in an effort to do two or three things. One is to prompt fellowship such as this kind of opportunity of gathering people together in prayer and unity in Christ. To do benevolence work, we conduct an ongoing benevolence fund to meet the needs of transients. It is a voucher program administered through the Lee Russell Association for the annual fee. If you're interested in that, you'll see an email address in the program for Keith Boudowski. Bro Boudowski is the Atworth United Methodist Church. If you're interested in being part of the Benevolence Voucher Program, which we coordinate through our city police department to serve transients, we'd love to hear from you and explain how that works and invite your participation in the program. It's an annual dues of $125 per year in September. Lee Russell does several things, including, just this past Sunday, a sing inspiration program in which we gathered choirs from across the city and shared a worship fellowship. We look forward to doing that annually. This is one of the things we also celebrate to do annually. So if you care to be a part of this, you can contact us through email. Our next meeting is the first Tuesday in May, which is the seventh. It'll be at noon this upcoming May, the seventh, at Atworth. Please use that email address to inquire. We'd be glad to respond and communicate with you. We celebrate that we're able to gather together in the Lord's name today, and grateful for this occasion, for all those who've come together to make it possible.
But I do want to just thank you all. It says a lot about our community, when you can come together, and we need each other. But it's really, really great, and I really look forward to these events because, again, it shows how connected we are and how all of us are brothers and sisters in Christ. And I do want to read some of the Scriptures here from Ecclesiastes in chapter four, verse nine through twelve. And I put some of this in the letter that some of you all received. But it says that two are better than one, because they have a good reward for their labor. For if they fall, one will lift up his companion; but woe to him who is alone when he falls, for he has no one to help him. Again, if two lie down together, they will keep warm. But how can one be warm alone, though one may be overpowered by another? And let's get to this point. Two can withstand him, and a three-fold cord is not easily or quickly broken. And the analogies of this Scripture is, they're talking about travelers who travels. That's the analogy that it's talking about. And when you look at that, each and every one of us are traveling through this world. We are traveling through this country, and we're certainly traveling through Phoenix City and Columbus and Fort Mitchell. But to tie it in together, it's always good that we can travel together, because we're traveling through this world. And it's important that we unite and that we lift up each other. And in this Scripture, it talks about one keeping each other warm. It also talks about one protecting another. But it also talks about encouraging one another. And that's what we're doing this morning. We're encouraging this community, because it is a positive community, and we are children of God, and we are all cut from the same cloth. So we need each other. And I am so very, very honored to be able to have you come out this morning to show that we are united as a community, and that we love each other. Because without that, we cannot please God. And what we're doing this morning is pleasing God. And so I want to thank you, along with my wife and I, and all, everyone that's here from the bottom of my heart. I want to thank you all for what you're doing for our community, because it's setting an example that we love each other, we protect each other, we encourage each other, and we build each other up. We are building others up and not tearing others down. And I thank you so very, very much for that. And that's my passion as the mayor of this city. I don't apologize for that, but we have to love people, and we have to love each other. And when you do things for the right reason, God will continue to bless this city. And there's a lot of positive things that are going on. But it's only by the grace of God, and I would be remiss if we don't think about the people in Lee County, because it could have easily been any of us. But only by the grace of God, He spared us to be here today. So I thank you all so very, very much for that. And may God continue to bless each of you individually, and may God continue to bless us collectively, because we certainly, certainly need each other, because we're traveling through this world, and we can't do it alone. Thank you all so much. And I do want to acknowledge another person who's probably is the most, I'm gonna quit saying older, he's more seasoned, but Pastor Raymond Cochran, I saw him somewhere. Thank you for all the years. He's very seasoned. We have people that have just come in this community, that has moved here and bought business. I want to thank you all for believing in this vision of Phoenix City. But let's continue to lift up each other. Let's continue to worship God, and let's continue to show love and be the example that he's given each and every one of us to do. And that's to be a builder and not a tear-down person. We love you. We thank you, and may God continue to bless all of us. Thank you.
Surely the presence of the Lord is in this place. I can feel His mighty power and His grace. I can feel the brush of angel wings. I see glory on each face. Surely the presence of the Lord is in this place. In the midst of His children, the Lord said He would be. It doesn't take very many. It can be just two or three. And I feel that same sweet spirit that I felt oft times before. Surely we can say that we're here with the Lord. Oh, surely the presence of the Lord is in this place. I can feel His mighty power and His grace. I can feel the brush of angel wings. Oh, there's glory on each face. For surely the presence of the Lord is in this place. There's a holy hush around us as God's glory fills this place. I've touched the hem of His garments. I can almost see His face. And my heart is so overflowing with the fullness of His joy. We can say without a doubt that we're here with the Lord. Oh, surely the presence of the Lord is in this place. I can feel His mighty power and His grace. I can feel the brush of angel wings. Oh, there's glory on each face. For surely the presence of the Lord is in this place. Oh, surely the presence of the Lord is in this place. This place.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you so much. Just wanted to remind you before Brady came, my wife just informed me, I told you I needed her. We're traveling together. But of all ministers and pastors excluding the head table stand and be recognized collectively, thank you all so much. The challenge I want, the challenge I want to put upon each of you for next year by the grace of God, if he has us here, is that when you get your letter, encourage your congregation to be here also going next year. So that, this challenge I will have for you all next year. Thank you all so much.
Our next guest needs no introduction, but we're gonna introduce him anyway. He spent, he originally hails from Conyers, Georgia. He informed me this morning that he was born in a Baptist hospital to a Baptist minister during the Southern Baptist Convention, and perhaps was destined to find himself in this position. You know him, he is Dr. Jimmy Elder. He's been the pastor at Columbus First Baptist Church for the past 16 years. There's a few things that folks always say about Jimmy. First of all is one, they like him. Second of all is that he is a person who loves to work and be active in the community. And the third thing is this, that he is a great connector of people, always getting folks with different gifts and abilities in the right places with the right people, connecting with others in order to work toward the building of the Kingdom of God. We are delighted this morning and honored to have him with us, Dr. Jimmy Elder.
Thank you very much. I'm so impressed. I love the tables. I love the way you sit around the table. How many of you are sitting with somebody that you did not know or that you didn't know too well when you got here? Look at that. We can just say amen and go home. That's something really special. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to give some words at this really remarkable event. It speaks so well of a community when you come together like this. And I also want to thank my friend, Mayor Eddie Low. He is one whom I deeply admire, I deeply respect. He's a man of vision and a man of consequence when it comes to the community and to leadership. He's a real servant leader in the terms that mean so much to me. And Eddie's been a good friend, and I'm very pleased and honored to be a part of today. I'm also glad to see my buddy Hugh Oakletree. Hugh and I see each other a lot of times each week, but Hugh looks different with clothes on from what he, that's right. Normally it's spandex. Normally we are in bike shorts, and we've done the bike ride across Georgia, and Hugh's been a part of that too. And so, so he is, he's a remarkable, I don't know what kind of dentist he is, but he's a really remarkable friend and a remarkable man. And I love Hugh. He's a, he's a really good person. So good to see you and so many others in this room that I know and I'm so grateful to be a part of. You know, the Scripture, and we use it a lot of times, says that where there's no vision, the people perish. The way I look at Phoenix City is that you are a community of vision. You're a community that is on the move. You're a community that is changing and growing. You're a community that you're, you're reaching your stride and you're reaching your cruising altitude in a really neat way. And it's because of vision from some of the leaders that you have here. It's because that you desire to push toward a future, and you look toward a future, and you refuse to be hindered by anything in the past. And you see, that's the mark of a good community. Jesus always talked about people who put their hand to the plow and looked forward, as opposed to people who are always looking over their shoulder and see what was at some point. And the key to unity in any community is for us to understand that we always face the sunrise, and we always face the opportunity. And this morning, you are literally facing the sunrise together as a community. You know, there are a lot of symbols in the church. We, you know, the cross, the Bible, you know, you see it in all the stained glass windows. The one thing that you never see in those symbols in a stained glass window is a casserole. And as Baptists, the casserole is a very important part of the way that we deal with each other. Because the casserole indicates that there's a table somewhere. And where there's a table, there are chairs around it. And where there are chairs around the table, everybody sits in equality across from each other, and we love each other, and we share a meal together. Virtually every culture had the, not the official or the formal part of the table, but virtually every culture has treasured the opportunity of the table. And we know that even families are strengthened when families sit together at a table together at least once a day and have a meal. It strengthens family. It strengthens the bonds that way. There's a restaurateur in New York named Danny Meyer. And Danny owns a whole bunch of different restaurants there, the Gramercy Tavern, the Union Square Cafe. He's the one that started this whole Shake Shack thing that you see the restaurants in various cities that are beginning to show up. But he has the most interesting understanding of what I call hospitality, he does too, which is the connecting of people together. Hospitality, which I think is such an important part of life, and it's something I've been fascinated with for a number of years. Meyer wrote a book entitled Setting the Table: The Transforming Power of Hospitality in Business. And it's incredible to see his insight in how he manages his businesses, how he runs his restaurants, how he looks at the people who are there. Just the pecking order of what he talks about, like the most important people in his business are not his investors, they're the people who work for him. And then the next people are the ones who are the vendors that bring the food in, because he says if you are good on, good terms with your vendors, you know that the vendors are gonna bring you the best stuff they have, and they're gonna tell you, well, that box is a day old, these are the ones we just brought out of the field. He said the next group are your customers, and said the final group are your investors, 'cause he said, you know, if your employees don't do well, and if the vendors don't provide something good, you have nothing to give to the customers, and therefore have nothing for your investors. And so he stacks it in the right way, which is almost the opposite of the way we do things. We take it and we find a pecking order that puts people on the top and works its way down, instead of saying, we all sit together at a table and find our place. He defines hospitality as that which happens for people, as opposed to that which happens to people. And you know, you think about it in the church, which is what I know best, but also in communities. We spend a lot of time in trying to figure out what to do to people, what to, how to work them that way, when we ought to spend a lot of time thinking about what we do for people. In the church, we say, come, join, get involved, do this, do this, do this, when in reality we should say, come, let us give you our welcome, our love, let us engage you in what you can be as a part of us. A part of us. When you have new companies that come to town, it's one thing, they bring economic development, they bring jobs, they bring all of these wonderful things, but when all we do is court businesses and say, come to town, we're doing something to them, we're giving them a place that way. But when you bring a person to town, and you move over at the table, and you pull another chair up, you do something for them by making them have a place and letting them feel the hospitality of the particular moment. That is, as Christian a thing, that is as religious a thing, that is as American a thing, that is as community a thing, as you're ever going to find, is making a room for somebody else at the table. Henry Wadsworth Longfellow said, "A single conversation across the table with a wise person is better than ten years' mere study of books." The conversation. Ronald Reagan said, "All great change in America begins at the dinner table." Tony Evans said, "When fathers come home after a tough day at work, they should come home to serve," like my father did, teaching lessons around the dinner table and leading their family in worship and prayer. And Martin Luther King said, "I have a dream that one day, on the red hills of Georgia, the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will be able to..." What? "...sit together at the table of brotherhood." Isn't that beautiful? Those words are timeless. But guess what? They introduce into the whole list of symbols, the table as a sacred place, a place where people can gather and can sit and look at each other. If you look in 2 Kings 4, verses eight through 10, you'll find Elisha, the traveling prophet, who would go from place to place, and he meets the Shunamite woman, and she and her husband host him, and then they decide that he's gonna be passing back and forth through. So what do they do? They invite him to their table, then they build a place on top of the house, right? And did you ever read what they put in that place? She said, "Let us make a small roof chamber with walls and put there for him..." Listen. "...a bed, a table, a chair, and a lamp, so that he can stay there whenever he comes to us." They made him family. And I'm telling you something, we can honor people, we can put people at a head table, we can do all these sorts of things, but the greatest gift we give them is to pull them up to the dinner table and just say, come, have dinner with us, and let's just talk a while. In Luke 24, we see the, on the road to Emmaus, when Jesus has been resurrected, and he is, the guys are walking on the road to Emmaus, and he joins them. And at the end of that whole conversation, where they're all distressed about what's happened, and the crucifixion, and all these things, what happens is Jesus joins them when they invite him where? To the table. And it's at the table he reveals who he is. In the breaking of the bread, the offering of thanks, they become one. And out of that came the most poignant message they could have ever had, not from a sermon, but from fellowship around the table. And you know what their response was? Didn't our hearts burn within us as he spoke? Around the table, you hear things in a way that lowers defenses and lowers this sense of needing to impress, in a way that is absolutely amazing. That's why God gave us the table. And remember that when Jesus had that last opportunity with his disciples, where did he choose to meet them? He didn't take them to a prayer meeting, he didn't take them to a church service. What did they do? They sat at the table together. And who was there? Certainly you would exclude people off that table, especially if there's one that's gonna betray you. No. You wash his feet, you all sit down together, because you know what? There was one more chance for him to change his mind. You could have done it at the table. You see, that's why to me, the table is such an important thing. When I was in seminary, I pastored a little church in Narrows, Kentucky. It's where the Rough River Narrows, that's why they called it Narrows. And, and so it was a little church, and it was, it was a booming metropolis. We had eight on an average Sunday. It would go up to 24 at Easter, because you always have people that don't come except on Easter. And also our families would come down during that time. But anyway, I was a young minister, had never pastored a church, and had not even married at that point. And I drove up one day to church, and Paul was there. Now, Paul was the chairman of the deacon. We only had one deacon, and he was the chairman. And it was very, very clear he was. And it was very, very clear he was. So Paul met me, and he said, he said, "Well, are you ready for the Lord's Supper today?" And I got this blank expression, I said, "No." And he said, "Well, why aren't you ready?" I said, "Nobody told me it was the Lord's Supper today." He said, "Jimmy, it is the second Sunday out of the second month of each quarter." And said, "That's when the Lord's Supper is held." And I said, "No." He said, "Yes, it is, I'm sure it's in the Bible somewhere. You've got to have it on the second Sunday of the second month." And I said, "Can't we just put it off so I can actually prepare for the Lord's Supper?" And he said, "Hmm, we can't do it that way, we've never done it that way." And I said, "Okay." He said, "You'll figure it out." And I thought, "Well, this is going to be fun." So I looked in the sanctuary, the little church there, it was a little framed church, and there was nothing on the Lord's Supper table. And I thought, "Well, I bet they forgot too," but I learned later they didn't. I started thinking, "What do you say at the Lord's Supper?" I'd grown up in a minister's home, I knew all this stuff. I could almost recite it, but I thought, "You don't ever go up without having some kind of note." So I got the hymnal, and in the back of the hymnal, there's a responsive reading called "The Lord's Supper," and it has all the scriptures in it. It was really a clever thing to do. So I opened that, put it up there, and I would look down to the responsive reading and read the scripture to get ready for the Lord's Supper. Well, anyway. So I got up and did my sermon, and there was still nothing on the table in front of me. And then I thought, "Well, I'm going to have a prayer, because, you know, maybe grape juice and soda crackers come from heaven at this moment." So I bowed my head, and we had a prayer, you know, "Lord, please bless us as we have communion." And I thought, "And there, there's none here." So we bowed our heads, and when we opened our eyes, there was still nothing on the table. But then May, his wife, got up, and she came up with a little piggly wiggly bag or something. And in that little paper bag, she came up to the Lord's Supper table, and she looked around like this, and she went, "What?" So she counted the people who were there. Then you hear the rustling of the paper, she opens the bag, and she reaches in, and she takes out one of those little trays that puts all the individual cups in it. So she takes that, and she looks again, and so she puts the eight cups in there for the eight people who are in the room. Then she takes out a tray, and she takes saltine crackers, and she breaks them into the eight parts, so you have just that many there, on the other tray. Then she reaches in the bag and pulls out a mason jar, and it's got this purplish-gray liquid in it, and I had no idea what it was. I later learned that May grew grapes, and she would squeeze them once a year, put them in a mason jar under the sink in her kitchen. Now, I digress, but I'll tell you this, it was kind of interesting, because at the beginning of the season, at the beginning of the season, you know, it was just kind of watery, and you know how grape juice tastes when you first squeeze a grape. And then, in the second quarter, which was the second Sunday of the second month of the second quarter, in the second quarter, it was getting a little sour. And by the third quarter, it was getting a little snap to it. And by Christmas communion, they asked for seconds, they did. So she, she reached in the bag, so she unscrews the top, then she reaches back in the bag, and she pulls out this little bulb thing, with a little black thing on the end of it. You've seen them, I saw them in my grandmother's bathroom, and I never asked what she did with that thing. But anyway, but there was that little red bulb with a little black thing on the end of it. And so she looked around the room, and so she reaches in, squirts it in, and goes, squirt, 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 squirt. And the last one didn't quite have as much, so it goes, "Pff," at the end of it. Everybody's sitting there. And then we had communion. Now imagine trying to get ready in the middle of all of that stuff going. But I looked back at it, and I thought about something. In that moment, she invited everybody to the table. Instead of it being that you walked into the room and everything was just set up, and we used whatever we needed, every cup was prepared for a person in that room. Every piece of soda cracker was broken for a person in that room. Everybody was invited to the table, and in one mystically magical spiritual moment, everybody became one. There's a mason jar with old grape juice, and the people were together. There's a beauty in that. When you think about the table, I've decided that it has to be the basic unit in our society. That the table is the one place where we lower our guard. Even in the 23rd Psalm, it says, "Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of my enemies." I've always said that kind of normalize things, because if you eat in front of an enemy, you're being pretty well protected. Or is it that it's a table prepared to invite the enemy to the table too, and maybe you could become one? I'm not sure that's not a good interpretation of the 23rd Psalm. Because it says, "Thou art with me, thou preparest the table." And you know of any table Jesus didn't invite something to. When I finish Hugh, when I finish at the Y in the mornings, I usually go to someplace and will drink coffee with some guys, somewhere, or some people. They're of every walk of life, every age, and we'll just sit and talk. No agenda or anything else, but we've become one through the years in this. And the connections that are made over coffee in the morning are enduring connections all through the week. You run into them in different places, you run into them in different projects, you run into them in different opportunities. I see them on Sundays, I see them during the week. There are other days, I go to certain places, and I sit at a table with people, a civic club or something else, and we sit together at the table. There are no titles, there are no pedigrees, they're just people sitting around a table. We've got a group of people on Monday nights, the women come to my house, where my wife leads a Bible study, and the men said, "We ought to do something too." And I thought, "Well, what a nice thing." You know, the women are doing something spiritual, so the men said, "Let's just go out and eat." So that's what they, we did. And the group's grown to about 30, and they call themselves the Romeos, the really old men eating out supper. So, so they gather together. But let me tell you something, it is amazing, the people who sit around that table and the way that they share. And then I noticed things began to happen. One would be sick or would have had surgery, and another would say, "Well, you've got to come Monday night." And they go way out of their way and pick them up and bring them and take them back home. Another one ended up in the hospital, and I ran into him yesterday. And two of the other guys who sit at the table on Monday night and eat together were leaving the hospital when I got there, having visited the guy. Isn't it amazing? The magic of the table, the most underused thing that we have in terms of that. We think we have to have summits and conferences and all of these other things, when if we just fix a pot of coffee, put a pile of styrofoam cups, and everybody sit around the table, and whoever comes in the room says, "Oh, yeah, yeah, we make room for you, let's pull one more up." And have 30 people at a table that seats eight, it's okay. And you just are who you are before each other. At a table, the truth is that literally, there is no race or creed or religion or anything else, it's just people. And when you look into someone else's eyes and you share a moment like that, something holy is taking place. Tom Friedman wrote a book called Thank You For Being Late. And it talks about the mind-boggling journey of how fast things are developing. You know, the Moore's Law, where things multiply exponentially over time, that starts with the Intel stuff. But one of the things he talks about is something called dynamic stability. Dynamic stability is the unexplainable part of why you could ride a bicycle. Because in all the things they can tell you about a bicycle, they can tell you, "You've got to pedal, you've got to stay up." Scientists always stop short of being able to tell you exactly why moving can make a two-wheeled vehicle stay up. We know that if you slow down too much, it falls over. We know if you go at the right speed, you can stay up. But, and they can do all sorts of calculations, but the only way they can describe why it stays up is in what's called dynamic stability. And that's the ability to keep things moving at a proper pace, balancing it, and you can stay up. The dynamic stability of a community is in the unity that it finds around the table. And it's unexplainable. There's no way to really explain why it happens, but it does. And because it does, we don't have to explain why you can ride a bike. And we don't have to explain why we can be one around a table. But if it works, why don't we use it? I'll close with one story. About 12 years ago, we had a couple show up at church. It was an interesting story. They, their daughter was at Fort, was actually in Iraq. She was, had been at Fort Benning and had deployed. They're from Pennsylvania. And when they came down, they were coming down to meet her as she came home from deployment. And so they, they got off from their jobs in Pennsylvania, they came down. It was going to be a great homecoming day as their daughter arrived at Fort Benning on a Sunday morning. So they stayed at the La Quinta Inn in Columbus. Then they got up that morning, and they dressed in their very casual clothes to just go see the daughter and to hug her and love her and tell her they were so glad she had gotten home safely from Iraq and all the dangers that were there. And they got as far as Veterans Parkway in Columbus on their way to Fort Benning when they got the phone call that said that she had been delayed in coming home. And they didn't know if it was going to be two days or if it was going to be two weeks, but she was delayed in coming home. They were in the middle of town, they were looking at each other. Butch and Sharon looked at each other. And Butch said, "What are we going to do now? You know, we're all the way down here, we don't know anybody. We're, you know, she's not coming home right now, what do you want to do, Sharon?" And Sharon said, "Well, there's a church, let's just go over there." So they came and pulled into a parking space at First Baptist in Columbus. They got out of their car, they kind of wandered across the lawn. And if you had seen them, they were not dressed as you normally would think for church, which didn't matter to me, but it, if, I've given you the picture. They were very casual, and they were walking across the lawn, and they could have been mistaken for a couple of people who were about to say, "Hey, you got $5 so I can get something to eat." That's what it could have looked like. One of our members saw them, and went out and spoke to them. He said, "What brings you here?" And they said, told the story. He said, "Well, come on inside, come on in and sit with us this morning in church." And said, "After church, let's go to dinner, let's go to lunch." And he went in, and he introduced them to some other people around. And they said, "Oh, that's great, can we go too?" And they formed a little community of people who was going to take them to lunch. After lunch, and after the time they'd been together around the table, they said, "Now, what are you going to do now?" They said, "Well, we're going to stay at the La Quinta until, you know, for a couple of days and see if she's going to do," said, "It could be a week." And said, "We're just going to wait." And one of the people said, "No, you're not, said, "You're coming home with us. We'll go by La Quinta, get your stuff, and you come on to our house." And they took them home with them. And every day, they all dealt with them. The family that took them home said, "We've got to go out of town," and said, "Here's the alarm code, here's the key, just keep the house as long as you need it. There's stuff in the refrigerator and anything else you need." And others said, "If you need anything while they're gone, just call us and we'll take care of them." They broadened the table, they invited them, they cared for them. And it was a week and a half later, the daughter came home. But through all of that time, the hospitality of those people, no preacher told them to do it, I'm their pastor, no preacher told them to do it, I can tell you. They did it from their hearts, they invited them to the table. Butch and Sharon Yoda, from Pennsylvania, got their daughter and brought her back up to the church. And we all got to meet her on a Wednesday night, yep, around the table. And we formed a bond. Don't even hear the rest of that story. They went back to Pennsylvania, and my dad was one of those who loved, he loved Pennsylvania, he loved Hershey, Pennsylvania. He loved the chocolate at Hershey, Pennsylvania. My dad was a minister, but he always believed that if you went from Dallas, Texas to Atlanta, Georgia, you had to go through Hershey on your way there, somehow or another. He always figured that out. So I had told Butch and Sharon, I had said, "You know, you know, I love Pennsylvania, it's so beautiful up there, my dad loved it," and I told my Hershey story. And he said, "Well, you've never had chocolate, you had it from our area, which is even better than Hershey chocolate." Well, anyway, that was just the conversation, it went on. At Christmas that year, they sent, from up there, to all the people that had kept them in their home, they sent a little bag of chocolate. And they sent the church about a 12-pound bar of chocolate, 12 years ago. So we took it and we thanked them, and I went on Wednesday night, and I started telling the people about it, and we took the chocolate, and we broke it up, and we gave it to everybody there. The next year at Christmas, another one came. This Christmas, for the 12th year, the 12-pound bar of chocolate came to the church from them. What we started doing from the first is, we took it on Wednesday night, broke it up, shared it around the table, and I told the people, I said, "This is chocolate communion. We're going to take, we're going to take it, we're taking one bar that represents the hospitality and love of Christ that was shown by you, this church. We're going to break it together, we're doing it in remembrance of the Savior who taught us what it meant to sit at a table and love each other. And we're going to remind ourselves every year that this comes, that this is what it means to be people who are one. One in Christ, one in purpose, one in mission, one in focus, one in love. And to this day, we still break the bar, share the chocolate, and remember the goodness of God in a welcome around a table." You know, it might not be a bad thing for us to do a stained glass window with a big old table in it. That's the place where Jesus did some of his best work. And you can too. Thank you for allowing me to be here, would you join me as we pray together? In the spirit of God, we offer to you our best selves. Not our pedigrees, not who we are, but just our best selves. Those who are created in your image and who are no better or no worse than anyone else, who all have something to offer that is no better or worse than anyone else. All who have position, no more important, no less important. Because it's just a chair at a table where we are who we are, created in your image to love one another and to make sure life in this world is better, because we're here and we're following your lead. I pray you'll bless this community, thank you for its leadership, and for those who gather. Always help us to make one more seat at the table for one more person who walks in the room. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pat, for reminding us of the power of the table, a place of communion, a place of fellowship. And I want to thank this mirror for having the vision for bringing us all to the table. This one, truly, this is the Lord's table, amen, amen. Now it's time for all of us to get involved and engaged, we've got to make this a legal meeting. We've got to pray. The scripture declares that the heavens belong to him, for the earth has he given unto men. And God will not violate his own rule of law. God invites us to invite him into this first realm. He says, "If my people, who are called by my name, would humble themselves and pray, seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then when I hear from heaven, forgive them of their sins, and I will heal their land." There's power in prayer. So just a few moments, we invite all of you at your table. So just a few moments, we invite all of you at your tables to gather together in prayer. We've got a list of things to pray for, but we're not restricted to that list. Let's pray for our church to impact our city for Christ, protect for all public safety personnel, safety for all employees, our school system, unity and peace and prosperity for all of our citizens, and wisdom and grace for all of our elected officials, local, state, and national. And let's pray for the victims of the tornado in Lee County and Talbot and those in Georgia as well. Can we just gather at our tables and let's pray? Stand, if you will, and let's invite God's presence into this room. And so to carry and to certainly the presence of the Lord is in this place. Have the Spirit Lord lead you, just pray. There's an old hymn that says, "What a friend we have in Jesus. All our sins and greed to bear. What a privilege it is to carry everything to God in prayer." Father, we thank you. Have your trials and temptations, if they're troubled anywhere. Jesus knows every weakness. Let's take it to God in prayer. Hallelujah. Effect your fervent prayers. For the righteous obeyeth much. Hallelujah. We pray for revival in this city. Breathe upon us. If these bones can live again. In the precious name of Jesus our Christ, we do pray. Amen. And let the church shout, "Amen." Amen.
Thank you, Jimmy, Dr. L., Pastor, thank you. Let's go one more time to the Lord. I'm reminded that just before Jesus was arrested, he was praying. And he prayed that not just for himself, actually, he said he wasn't praying for himself, said he was praying for those who would believe because of the ones that he had called to be one in him, one as he was with the Father in relationship and in community. And that's our prayer this morning. God and Father of us all, truly you have brought us together at the table this morning. The table of fellowship, the table of food, the table of the family of God. We pray that we might be one in spirit and one in effort as we build up our city, build up our community, build up each other. We ask all of this in your name, Lord Jesus. And now may the grace of Christ and the love of God and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit be with us all now and forevermore. Amen.